We don't hit the button to stop recording?
Uh-uh.
No, it's streaming.
Okay.
We need one of those signs that radio broadcasting stations have that says Paul and Eric from your live.
Yeah.
That we're on.
Team, well, I'm done.
I want to see it now.
Six, six oh nine.
I'll keep you up for it.
I'm talking.
Okay.
One minute.
All righty, it is five o'clock on August the eighth and I'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Brett, can you lead us in the pledge?
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, we have no delegations, so we'll move to the consent agenda. First item is minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All righty, on to open enrollment.
You have two names in front of you. Charles Preston Greenleaf, seventh grade from Ritchie County. Mason Stitt, seventh grade from Ritchie County. I believe they're enrolled at Leading Creek in Wanting to come to Gilbert.
Make a motion that we accept these enrollments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept these enrollments. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Treasurers report, Clay.
Good evening. Good afternoon, late afternoon, evening. Evening, evening. On the agenda, you have the schedule of checks to be written. Was there any questions with the schedule of checks?
Make a motion to approve the schedule of checks to be written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the schedule of checks to be written. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I wanted to just bring to the board's attention, I know with everything getting started back in school and everything, that's kind of the big thing. And August and September in the world of finance is a huge deal too, because our financial statements as a board are due at the end of September. And that's a very, very stressful, long hours, time of the year, just like everybody does. But, so you will be seeing those coming out. If you have questions, want to see that process, it's pretty interesting templates that the state does provide us in putting those together. But if you swing by, I mean, I can show you those templates of where the information comes from. We will have a couple of new GASB requirements, governmental accounting standard board this year. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that factors into the financial statements. So just wanted to bring, make the board aware of that. Again, that is due by September the twenty eighth to the state. Probably hear more about that to come.
All righty, we'll move on to reports. Recognition of student staff, none? Okay. I was informed Mr. Reedy cannot be here, so we'll reschedule that at a later time. So we're down to Ms. Mason.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
You should have received in your packets a couple different papers that I had put in there. One is academic achievements, and there's a lot of numbers on the papers. And it talks about how you configure indicators for math and English achievement, for progress. And I'm not going to read through all of this, but I did want to point out, when you receive the strategic plan, there was a lot of numbers at the front of that plan. And a lot of times, people have a lot of questions as to how those numbers and those colors are derived. And the papers that I gave you do talk about how those are figured. And I'm going to just quickly go through how we figure out academic achievement on the strategic plan, those numbers, those student performance numbers. And then how they also, you will also see in this fall sometime, when the GSA scores are released, you will also see the balance scorecard, and those numbers are also seen there as well. And this is how they're configured. So with the academic achievement indicators, what the state looks at is our GSA. And that GSA is broken down into four achievement levels. Does not meet standards, partially meets standards, meets standards, and exceeds standards. So if you look at that, for every one of those progressions, a number is assigned to that. And then based off how many students score those numbers or those achievement levels, we determine the number of points awarded. So it is important for every student to take the assessment, so we can see where they fall. And along with that, with the proficiency, we also look at progress. And with progress, what we look at is if a student improves, and ultimately, that is what we want all kids to do. We have some kids that do score low. The bottom line is we want them to improve. No, they're probably not going to go to distinguish them one year, but we do just want to see growth with those kids. And that's another indicator. In that GSA that we look at, it's in the GPS that we look at with the strategic plan, and it's going to be on our balance scorecard when we have that come out in the fall. So we're looking at that improvement. And you'll also notice that progress toward English language proficiency, in the past, we have had students who are English language learners. And because we have no students in that cell, we do not get graded or judged on that. So you will not see that in our strategic plan, and you will not see that on the balance scorecard when it becomes available this fall. Attendance is another one. And I know a lot of times, we want to look at our overall attendance, but when you actually look at accountability and our scorecard, what people are looking at is those students who attend ninety percent of the time. We want students to participate and attend school ninety percent of the time. So that is my focus on attendance, is are they attending? And that's, that's an easy one to kind of monitor. We also are judged or scored on behavior. And one of the things with behavior is, they look to see how many out-of-school suspensions we have. And with out-of-school suspensions, we do have to suspend some kids if it's a dangerous act or if it falls under that level four. But overall, we do want to minimize the out-of-school suspensions. So they look at that as well. Again, we are under forty-three seventy-three, and we do have to follow that, so we will have out-of-school suspension. But we do want to try to be proactive with student behavior. The easiest one to kind of figure out is your graduation cohort, which is another indicator on our balance scorecard, and it's also shown in our GPS system along with the strategic plan. And we look at students who start that ninth grade year, and of course, we want them to graduate within four years. But if they don't, then they do have that fifth year that they can make up. So you know, if they graduate, that's great for us. If not, we do have that extra year to ensure that they do have that graduation. On track to graduate, this is something I worked with Mr. Putnam and Mr. Reed on. With on track to graduate, that is also seen in our strategic plan. We look to make sure by the end of that tenth grade year, that students have twelve credits. And those twelve credits have to focus around the two credits for every primary subject or content area. So we want two credits in math, science, social studies, and ELA. And then we also want in addition to four more credits. So that is on track to graduate. Then post-secondary achievement is another area we are graded on. And for our post-secondary achievement, they are looking at students in the senior class. So they will take all those students, and they will look to see if they have three indicators. If they have advanced placement courses, we would get a point for that. If a student has completion of a college-bearing course with an A, B, or C, then that student would get a point. And then completion of the four required CTE completer courses, which should be a little bit easier for us now that we have another CTE completer available at the high school. Are there any questions on the accountability system? This is seen in a lot of different places, and you'll see it in a lot of different things I hand out, but that's how those numbers are derived. The other thing I wanted to talk about and just remind you is, we will be having an open assembly the first day of school on August twelfth. And we will have Dr. Jim Harris. He is a presenter from Marshall, and he presents on trauma. And I know when we reviewed the surveys that staff send out, one of the things that they continually say is they need to know more about student trauma, they need to know more about how to deal with behaviors. And he is an excellent, excellent resource. So I'm super excited for him to be there, and I think it will be a good presentation. And the other thing I just wanted to touch briefly on was the parent involvement. Miranda Canfield worked and made up a flyer, just so you'll be aware of the parent involvement activities at the elementary school. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Frazier, whenever you're ready.
With facility updates, the sure entry, we had a meeting today, progress meeting number four on it today. The door frames are installed, the tile is completed, the doors, we should see the doors delivered tomorrow and actually hung tomorrow. The casework, while we're in the meeting, we were told the casework was being delivered while we're in the meeting. I learned at about four o'clock, the casework was not delivered today. The casework will be delivered on Wednesday. So and then, you know, we'll figure out waxing, we'll figure out that, but we're coming near the end of it. As to what it's going to look like the first day for staff, I'm sure we're still going to be working in there. And there's going to be work to be done with the staff there on Friday this week, August twelfth. As to what it's going to look like on August eighteenth, the first day for students, I feel most of the work is going to be completed. I don't want to stand here and lead you. I think we'll be kind of loose ends. I think we'll be finishing loose ends. I reminded Mr. Putnam today, and he real quickly reminded me that he knew, he lived through it. But I said, we did go through about three months of last school year, and didn't even use the front end when we did the high school steps. I said, I said, we will manage this, we will get through this, we'll be flexible. He reminded me real quickly that he lived it, he knew we did that, and that they would do, they would do whatever necessary. So I think we're going to be kind of loose ends. I do anticipate a lot of work being completed in the next two weeks up there. It was kind of a law from last meeting to this board meeting, and I think they were waiting on material. There wasn't material stacked up there for them to work on. They weren't going to send guys just to stand around. So there was a law. I'd be lying to you if I told you it did. Today, there was a lot being done, and we're being told a lot of material will be delivered in the next couple of days. Uh, today, there was a lot being done, and we're being told a lot of material will be delivered in the next couple days. So we should be moving along there. I do anticipate using the front entry. Right now, we're hoping to be using the secure, uh, entry, the, the mantrap vegetable, or vestal. But now, I did, uh, some, some items out there with the glass work, the glass for that vest, I'm, I'm, the mantrap. The glass for the mantrap, uh, is glass that they're a little bit nervous right now, and that wasn't on the radar earlier. They, we just learned that today. They're not saying it won't be in, but it could be, it possibly will be open school, and we have the framing of a mantrap, and we don't have the glass in the mantrap. Uh, but, but we'll work through that, we'll keep you guys involved and in the loop what's going on there. That canopy that I mentioned the last couple of board meetings, that is out there, we would definitely start school without it. It is gonna be shipped, though, on August twenty-eighth, so at least now we have a date. But that, that's the canopy on, on the outside, uh, so someone's not standing in the weather. But that's the secure entry. I, I think we're gonna have to navigate through some things. It'll be a little bit frustrating, but I, but I think we'll manage it. I think Mr. Putnam and the staff up there will make do, and then I think it'll be short-lived. The, uh, you know, the little bit of trouble we have right there to get it started school with it.
I bet.
I was, I was gonna ask about the canopy. What's the canopy?
Though, though, we're bringing a roof structure above and outside, so.
Okay, so it is gonna match the building, huh?
Yes, and if you're coming into the bedroom, you wouldn't be standing out in the weather. Uh, you'd have a roof over your head.
Yes.
To the right?
Yes, it'd be to the right. If you're looking at the main entry, it's gonna be to the right. Basically, we took a window, one of the existing windows, and made it the door into the mantrap.
Okay.
Uh, so that, that's, that's the canopy. I'm talking about the outside. Nothing to do with the functioning of it or anything like that, just where you won't get away as you're standing there waiting. You'll get away getting to that, but.
Is the glass bulletproof?
The glass is not bulletproof. It's, it's just a layer of protection. Uh, uh, some of the glasswork, like into the, uh, some of the glasswork into what we call the command center, you can see out if you're in there, they can't see in. And we have been in talks with, uh, with city construction, the contractor and the architect. Uh, that whole left side there is our library. And our library or media center, now steam room, it's been a lot of names over the years. I believe right now we're converting it into a, to a steam room, but there's a lot of glass right there. And it's unlike any other classroom in the building. Every other classroom in the building just has the, the door window, and we pull, we pull a blind, so to speak. And that's a sign of trouble in the building. If Mr. Haines or Mr. Putnam's gonna walk through in the building, and they're walking around, and they see that blind pulled down, that's the alert that there's trouble in that classroom. It should never be down any other time unless there's trouble in that classroom. Uh, the library has several windows. So we're in discussions with it today as kind of an add-on to this secure entry of putting that glazing on it, where if you're in the library, steam room, whatever, you can see out. But if there was an active shooter or something, they, they could not see in. Uh, so we're, we're talking about adding that. There's not been decided yet, but we're in discussions with them getting a price on that.
So that's gonna stay the same, right? That there were no longer B doors where the doors are now, is that right?
No, the, the existing main doors are still there. They're, they'll be right there. In addition to the main doors that are right there, I think there's four of them right there. In addition to that, about eight feet in the building, maybe not that, six foot in the building, is gonna be another set of double doors. And, and, and the idea there is kinda, if, if you're already in the building and you're exited the, that, the building anyway, if we have a perpetrator or some, some bad guy outside, and he wants to get in, he can watch Brett walk out, he can catch the door behind it. Now there's another layer of doors inside the building, six, eight feet, that those doors are locked, and, and that would kinda be a, a catch-all there, uh, to catch that. But there, there'll be another set of double doors with, just inside the double doors that are there now. A visitor coming in, uh, I still anticipate, and I'm sure Mr. Putnam, um, could talk about it better, but in the morning, when we've got our buses rolling, when we've got all the students, I see with, with supervision at the door, there's always staff members assigned to the front of the building with supervision at the door. I think all students, the main times of the day, in the morning and the afternoon, with loading buses, still using the main entry. Visitors, once we're in the school, school's locked down, all doors locked, visitors will go into mantrap. And that's how anybody coming, once school's in session, will come into mantrap entry.
What will they do for games? Is there a plan or?
I, I think the main entry, the, the main entry. And I had a discussion with Mr. Putnam, I don't wanna speak to that, but that, that would be my best answer to you right now. Any other questions on the secure entry? Uh, the additional flooring's all done, happy to say that. All the additional flooring, the, the two science wing classrooms, the science wing hallway, the six additional offices within our office space, the vocational hallway, all new tile, all waxed. Our custodial crew did a great job, those floors. I, I should've done before and after, because there's not a better explanation I can give you. And if I'd have showed you before, and now I'll show you the after. And, but happy to say all that work's done, and we're very, we're very happy with that work. Uh, HVACI, I do not have a, a better update than when I gave you last board meeting, however many, however many days ago that was. We are still waiting, being told mid-August for delivery. We are told WR Drake will be here on site once we have the material, and we'll start work immediately. I did talk to them, ESG, and, and I said, you know, at no point, if we can't handle any kind of shutdown of school or anything like this, can we do all this work without shutting down school? But he said yes. Uh, he does not anticipate any reason to shut down school. He does not anticipate any long periods that we're sending their students or miserable, or staff miserable in hot situations. Uh, there will be a big crane day, as I told you last meeting. Uh, they will try to do that during non-school hours, where, where we'll have people out of the building, not have anybody around to lift those units on the building. But that's about all I have in, in, uh, update for HVACI. Um, the animal processing classroom, I told you about our business, I told you about our meetings last meeting. We are gonna have a meeting next week with all the, the appropriate people, our people, the, the USDA inspector and, and all that, to make sure that we have everything the way we want it. The plan's the way we want it, we're all on the same page. And then we will send that final plan to the SBA. We will need their final approval before we move out and bid that, bid that job out. But it is moving, like I said, our final meeting sometime next week, and then send for the SBA for final approval, and then start bidding that job out. That's the animal processing classroom. The drainage issue out back, I was in contact with SLS, uh, this week. Uh, they are very close, what were their words to me about calling us with, one, the root of the problem. What's causing this drainage issue out back? Uh, and the root of the problem. I talked to you about a frisk drain last time. They now have maybe a couple other durable options within our budget that, 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 we haven't heard of yet, and I tell you to them, but they're supposed to give us the root of the problem, and maybe a couple other options for us to address the issues, uh, issue out back. Again, I, I've been open and transparent with the board. At least some of the steps to that backing park, parking lot Ford, the animal process, we have no choice but to fix them. We, we have to fix those issues.
Are you working the, the drainage problem in with the budget of the, the classroom, the meet?
No, no, the separate.
This is separate, okay.
Separate, yes, yes. Right now, it'll be the best answer, and I, I don't wanna get you plays, uh, Lane, but, uh, we, we do have been at Levis some ground maintenance, and, and right now, that, uh, that maintenance issue out back, that drainage issue be coming out of it. Now, we don't know how, how deep that's gonna go.
I was just wondering what budget when you mentioned.
No, it, it's not involved in the animal processing, no. Um, the storage building at the elementary school, we are, uh, in the same boat, the, at the same time, not at the same time, but the same date that we have the meeting on the animal processing classroom, 'cause it's the same people involved, we will have a meeting on the storage building at Gilmore County Elementary. And, and make sure, again, one, that we're on the same page, we know exactly with the engineer, with the architect, with all those people on the same page. And then we've gotta get fire marshal approval on that plan, and then we'd be ready to bid that out. And that meeting should happen next week. Any questions about facility updates at all? Thank you, yes.
Oh, hold on, you still have transportation on there. I wanted to ask you about.
Yep.
A couple, a couple meetings ago, you had talked about some, some buses that, that we had that we needed to get rid of, whatever came of that.
We, we have sold two, and they were picked up, I don't know, I wanna say, uh, a month or so ago. I, I couldn't tell you for sure.
Yeah.
We do have three that just need getting on and getting them out there and selling them. Uh, the board has already approved to sell them.
Right.
Uh, that, that's been happening, and the board made it, we need to sell. Now, along the transportation line, we have a bus, we should be getting that was on last year's order, uh, a new bus that should be, be delivered any day now, uh, that should be ready for this school year. And then, real soon, I'll be bringing to the board, uh, asking to buy this year's bus with this year's money. And, uh, and I know you guys have probably heard about the electric bus and everything. Right now, Gilmore County Schools, uh, was talking with the superintendent, talking with Clay. Uh, you've heard free bus. I, I'm one of those people that, uh, is free really free? Uh, I think the best answer I can give the board right now, free is almost free. Uh, and, and what I mean by that, I, there is a grant that we can apply for. We have to apply for it by August nineteenth, and, and what it is, they will give us three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for an electric school bus. That's gonna cost us about three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So if we could get a new school bus for fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, we definitely have to look at that. And it's definitely something we're considering. So at this point, I think we would want to apply, uh, for that grant, to see if we were awarded that grant. There is also, uh, grants that you can apply for to take care of the electrical. What do we need to charge this thing? Where are we gonna put it at? Where are we gonna mount it at? Uh, and, and there are grants to apply. So the best answer I can give the board, obviously, when it comes that time and get approval, I'll bring you way more information, way more details. But free is almost free, uh, when it comes to electric school bus. Uh, our dealer, we developed with the team forever, uh, they're buying in, they never thought they'd do that, they're, they're believing it. I rode one, I rode one at the, uh, transportation conference. They wanted to take us on the steepest hills and around, and it seemed to have enough power. Um, it, it, it's a bus we're gonna have to put on a particular route. It's a bus that I wouldn't wanna settle trips. Uh, this is a bus that's gonna have to stay in Glenville. Uh, it's a bus that's gonna have to park at the bus garage, you know, it's not gonna be on a route where, where the guy's able to park at home in the evening, save himself mileage, save us mileage. This bus is gonna have, it's gonna have to plug in after, after it runs a morning run. Plug in after it runs the evening run. In the winter, it's probably gonna get about half the time on a charge than it gets in, in the summer. Uh, but I do think it's definitely something we need to look into, take advantage of a, of, of the situation where free is almost free. Anything else there? Anybody else think that?
Thanks, sir. All right. We'll move to new business, um, scheduling meetings with the LSIC.
I've spoken with both, uh, principals. Gilmore County High School would like to have November, November fourteenth, and Gilmore County Elementary School on December ten. And those are board meetings, and he'd like to go before and have the meeting at the facility.
What was the elementary school again?
Uh, December tenth.
December twelfth?
Twelve, twelve, sorry, sorry. I'm just like. And the fourteenth is correct, right?
So I'll make a motion to approve those dates as stated.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, um, have those meetings at the high school on November the fourteenth, and on the elementary school at December the twelfth. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, lease maintenance agreement with Hart Office, I'll let Clay talk a little bit about it. Um, I do, I do wanna let you know that they've been very good to work with, that's who we've had before. So Clay will explain the new lease with you and send your packet.
Read it all to you, just so everybody that's listening can kinda get a gist. Uh, Hart Office Solutions is our current copier service maintenance provider. Uh, we lease those copiers. Most counties in the state do not buy copiers, because if you own them, maintenance is basically on you. So most counties choose to lease them. Um, I did speak with, um, some of the IT people, some people that use them. You know, are you having issues, or, I mean, are we happy with the service? By and large, the answer was yes. Take into consideration, um, if you see, this is a fair market value lease, this is what most counties do, 'cause you, again, you don't own them at, if you wanna buy them at the end, they'll sell them to you, uh, but you don't own them. So it would cost us a considerable amount to make a overall change in carrier. Uh, this is, uh, that being said, this is a company that is part of a Sourcewell, uh, purchasing co-op. And we can piggyback, as a state entity, we can piggyback, uh, off of nationally recognized purchasing co-ops. Uh, so whatever, however they bid that price out per sheet or per color sheet, per black and white sheet, we get that price. So that is kind of the background of the information. Uh, just so everybody knows what we would be talking about. I think it's on, it's on my second page there after their cover page. We would be adding three new, uh, some of our copiers in county have over a million copies on them. So we're not, we're not replacing perfectly good machines. So we will be adding three new black and white copiers, and it lists there where they're going. Uh, the back workroom in the high school, uh, elementary school first floor workroom, elementary school second floor workroom. One of the requests, uh, that we were able to take into consideration, uh, and it worked for us, the high school currently, if I understand correctly, Mr. Putnam, has no color copier. Is that true? Or at least the big one?
Yes.
The main one, they have none, it's black and white. Uh, that was a request that I heard when this whole process started. Please get us a color copier, please get us a color copier. Um, and, and kinda the nerd and geek in me, um, if you've ever broke it down and figured out, uh, the cost difference between one of those little deskjet things that sits on your desk and what you can print from a copier, the difference is astronomical. You can see there, I mean, less than four cents a page for color. If you add that up on a Brother printer or HP or whatever, it's gonna be about three or four times that much. We will be adding one color copier to the high school main office, front workroom. Uh, we will be adding two color copiers, one, uh, for the elementary office. I believe that one has over a million copies on it as well. Um, and then the board office workroom. And that is, I believe that's in leases, leases room. Uh, that's, that's one, that's the only color copier that we have, uh, at central office, so it gets used quite a bit. What we will be keeping of our current lease, and you can see the count, the meter counts, if you go to the next page, we will keep three forty-five page per minute, uh, Toshiba copiers. The special ed one, which is dedicated strictly to special ed, which is in, uh, Stacy Smith's office. Uh, the board office mailroom, uh, which is the little office, uh, in the main hallway. Uh, and then it's nickname finance, it's down in this, down in this hallway back here. And basically, everybody on that end of the hallway uses that printer. Uh, but you can see that their, their counts are relatively low, uh, as far as usage and what they have on. And then we will be keeping kind of the oddball of the bunch is a Lexmark. Uh, Hart did not have to service that one for us and keep it under their maintenance agreement. Uh, but it's one thing I asked for, and they were happy to do that. Uh, so they are gonna keep and maintain, uh, that copier for us as well. All the copiers that we are keeping is under the maintenance contract, so we'll not have any surprises, uh, as far as parts, and they are responsible. Are there any questions, uh, with the, with the copier lease? And this expires in December, we're doing it now, uh, just like everything else.
When you say add, like add three, add one, add two, I, I mean, is that, that's replacing the?
That, that's replacing, yes, yes.
Just wanted to clear.
Yes, no, we're not adding additional copiers, we're just replacing, yeah. And I did up the count, uh, because they kind of, I'll try to say they sneak stuff in on you, but, uh, kind of, if you go over your allotted count for the month, they may or may not charge you overage fees, uh, for those counts. Uh, our average for black and white is ninety, or our allotted amount is ninety-one thousand four hundred. Or, or that was our average. So I made sure that in contract, we had ninety-two thousand black and white copies, uh, that we could do every month, and still have a little bit of room. Um, our color copies was, was low, uh, but we also didn't have a color copy in the main office of the high school. Uh, so it was, it was, I think, where was it at? I think it was like twelve thousand, twelve thousand two hundred and fifty was our average, and I upped it to fifteen thousand. And I say all that to say this, we're still cheaper than what the last payment was. So that is, that is good news for us. We added some things that we felt were needed, uh, and most of the copiers in the school should be new. So, uh, that's a win-win. Are there any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease maintenance agreement with Hart Office Solutions.
Second, Ed.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the lease maintenance agreement with Hart Office Solutions. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All righty, we're to out-of-state field trip for FFA members.
Okay, this is just because. Okay, this is just because they couldn't even secure a hotel in West Virginia. They had to cross and go over to Virginia to get a hotel. And all out-of-state trips have to be approved by the board. So they're not actually going to another state to do anything other than to sleep and come back.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for the FFA members to the state fair.
Second.
Okay.
How many, how many students do we know that are signed up for this? Or, because this is, this is before.
Um, I think Nick said nine, because they're taking the van, correct, Joe?
They're taking the van. I couldn't tell you how many students, so that means nine or under.
Nine or under.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the out-of-state field trip for the FFA members to attend the state fair. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the June nineteenth holiday, which only affects a hundred and forty-plus day people. And I looked it up, it is a national holiday now, and it falls on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and that is a Monday. So the way it stands now, one forty and above, we get June nineteenth as well as June twentieth for observation.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the June, Juneteenth holiday schedule. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next one that's on the agenda is policy committee report, consideration of working remote policy.
I'd like to make a motion to send consideration of the working remote policy to the policy committee.
Is there a second?
You're just asking to see, like, how many?
Just for the committee to discuss it.
I'm just curious myself, that's just curiosity, I guess, that should be easy.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to send a consideration of a remote working policy to the policy committee. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next is discussion of handbooks.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone the discussion until we have the full board present.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to postpone the discussion of handbooks until the full board is present. Any further discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Well, actually, hang on, is this going to delay the printing of them or them getting out or?
No, we already passed that.
They're done, okay.
Yeah, we passed that last night.
Okay, all right, then, yeah, we can move on.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We have no old or unfinished business at this time.
Okay, then we'll go to personnel.
Okay, how would you like to view this by categories?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Under professional, we have Jared Pritzwater, communities and school liaison, and that's for Gilmore County High School. Veda Woodford, resignation, seventh grade English at Gilmore County High School, affected August one, twenty twenty-two. And the strike through is Eric Yoder. He pulled, he does not want to resign now as the ALC instructor.
Can I just ask what the communities and school liaison is?
I was going to ask the same question.
Shall we?
Um, it is, it is a program that we give money to the state. There's actually an MOU between the state and the county. They provide funding to three staff members, and those staff members actually work to provide tier-one services. Tier-one services for students can vary depending upon the context. So if it's a, if it's a, like, a physical need such as food, they work with shelter, if we need shelter. Sanitary products for girls, if there's not funding, those are very expensive. And with that funding, those three people actually purchase things based off of the needs assessment of the school. And then they distribute those products. And they also provide tier-two services for families, which is just another layer for services that actually have more of a need. And then with tier-three services, they often work with other community stakeholders, such as many Hamilton, if there's a social emotional problem. Really, it kind of encompasses everything that we have asked our teachers to do on top of teaching. We can kind of take that off and let these guys do that, and then let the teachers worry about teaching.
And it's fully funded through the grant, so it costs the county nothing to have these services.
I'd like to make a motion to approve professional under personnel as listed.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve professional personnel as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Under service, April Richardson, resignation substitute cook.
Make a motion to approve under service on personnel list as written.
Second.
Been moved to approve service on the personnel list as written. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Extracurricular, Sherry West, mentor teacher, special education, Gilmore County High School. Sherry West, mentor teacher, special education, Gilmore County High School. That's two new teachers that are in special ed. McKinley Buckley, mentor teacher, music for Gilmore County High School. Leslie Campbell, literacy tutor. Leslie Shiflett, literacy tutor. Anita Roberts, itinerant counselor. Sherry West, program coordinator, Gilmore County Elementary School, after-school. Tina Foster, healthy choice tutor, and all of the, that's all of Gilmore County Elementary School. The literacy and the healthy choice. Suzie Kirkpatrick, bus operator, activity bus. Johnny Eisenhardt, bus operator, activity bus. Lori McCord, cook, after-school program. Ashley Barker, after-school credit recovery, that would be at Gilmore County High School. Jacob Yocum, after-school tutor, Gilmore County High School. Kelsey Hickman, after-school tutor, Gilmore County High School. Amanda Poole, SAT coordinator for pre-K, K and one, at Gilmore County Elementary. Crystal Smith, SAT coordinator, second, third. Amber Fraser, SAT coordinator for fourth and fifth. Ashley Barker, SAT coordinator, six through eight, Gilmore County High School. Ashley Barker, SAT coordinator, nine through twelve. Caleb Conrad, head mini-titan volleyball coach. Doug Bell, head mini-titan baseball coach. Timothy White, auxiliary mini-titan football coach. Austin Ratliff, auxiliary mini-titan football coach. Becky Chester, math addict tutor, Gilmore County Elementary. Tracy Wall, mentor teacher, science, Gilmore County High School.
Could I just ask, the mentor teacher, does that mean that when there's a new teacher, they have to have a more experienced teacher that mentors them?
And that's been through the program, that's certified. They're kind of the go-between, the principal and the new teacher. So if there's a question, they'll ask their mentor teacher, so they don't have to go direct to the principal. And the mentor teacher will sit down on the calendar of events, they'll go over the discipline, they'll go over procedure, about how you fill this out and how you do requisition. So they're that extra set of help to that new teacher.
And the SAT coordinator with the?
Student assistant team, that is when kids are having issues or maybe attendance, and they will meet with the team and come up with an intervention plan to help these students.
And what about healthy choices tutor? Is that in a grant or is that just?
That is part of the safe, safe-for-ch children, twenty-first century grant, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve extracurricular personnel as listed on the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve extracurricular personnel as listed on the personnel agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Substitute teacher for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Martha Kay Allen, David Bishop, Laura Chapman, Bethany Frymeyer, Nancy McVaney, Pam Minnick, Austin Ratliff, Mary Wellings, of course, Eric Yoder pulled his name because he's no longer, he's going to continue to be ALC. Vicki Allman, Tony Bishop, Anna Dick, Robin James, Jennifer McNeely, and she is restricted, so she has different category than the other ones, but she can still sell. Andrea Putnam, Brandon Schinaberry, Amanda Williams, Betty Anderson, Monica Bush, Amber Dooley, Holly Bragg, Cass, Casey Miller, Jeanette Ramazan, Pamela Short, and Trevor Wright.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the substitute teacher on the personnel agenda as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve substitute teachers as listed on the personnel agenda. Any further discussion?
Yeah, do you, do you feel comfortable with the amount of substitutes that we have going into the year? Would you like to see that list grow?
I'd like to see the list grow, but this, it is what it is, so, yeah.
I was just curious.
Anything else?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, abstain. Motion carries.
Substitute classroom transportation aide for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Wilda Costner, Seth McHenry, Ellen Minnick, Michaela Jones, and Suzanne Ratliff.
So moved.
Okay, been moved to accept the substitute classroom slash transportation aides presented on the personnel agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Substitute custodians for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Donald Hess, Seth McHenry, and Ellen Minnick.
So moved.
It's been moved to accept the substitute custodians as presented on the personnel agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Substitute cooks for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Amanda Rose and Susan Ratliff.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept substitute cooks as presented on the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Substitute bus operator for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Pat, Patrick Buckner, Mason McCann, Carlos Bailey, Luke McKnight, and Eric Martin.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept substitute bus operators as presented on the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Substitute mechanic for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Gerald Bellnap, call him Jerry, it's hard to say.
You know anything about him, Joe?
Yeah, he was our mechanic for like twenty-seven years. Good, good guy, yeah, we took him really bad.
Yeah.
Motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to present to accept substitute mechanic on the personnel agenda. All in favor? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Substitute secretary for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Martha Clutter, Rebecca Minnick, Janie Fisher, and Debbie Skinner.
Motion. Second.
It's been moved and accepted. I may.
You're doing so great, buddy.
Let me refer to that again. It's been moved and seconded to accept the substitute secretaries as presented on the personnel agenda. All, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye.
That's a long question.
All opposed? Abstain? All in motion carries.
And substitute nurse for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Whitney McLaughlin.
Motion. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept substitute nurses as presented on the personnel agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Then our superintendent's information, I mean, Joe, our focus is getting the school ready. And, you know, I go up there every day and I'm kind of like, oh, oh, but it'll be there. They keep telling me it'll be there, so it'll be there. We've got a lot of professional development planned for the next week for our teachers, and of course, they can work off the eleven. The twelfth is the opening day, and I invite you to come and to listen to Dr. Harris. He also worked as a mentor for autism. He's very, very knowledgeable on dealing with children with behavior, so I'm excited to listen to him.
What, what time was that again?
Not, we open at eight.
From eight to eight-thirty, AM.
Refreshments.
Eight-thirty will be the opening.
Uh, yes, and then Dr. Harris will take over. You can be there between eight and eight-thirty if you want something to eat. And then eight-thirty, we'll have the opening. And then after that, Dr. Harris will present. Lot going on, we'll get there, we're school ready.
Dinner?
Do my prep?
Nothing, nevermind.
Okay. So, we're getting it, so. Excited to start another year. Can't believe it, all right.
Give anything else, Pam? Okay, where do board member comments, Mr. Chapman?
I have nothing today.
Dr. Barber?
Uh, yeah, real quick, I just wanted to toss something out there. This isn't anything that requires any real immediacy, just something I wanted to kind of bring to the discussion and see maybe if we could put it on a future agenda. I know the school year is getting ready to start, so, you know, this would be kind of looking towards the next school year. You know, Judy Leggett's bands over at the elementary school have really kind of taken. They're, they're really good, their performances have been good, her recruitment's been great. Some of you all may remember when we used to go to like Troy and see the little piddly four-person band? Then we'd go to Sand Fork and we'd see like a little six-person band? And now they're all in one group there, and it's, they're, they're learning a great deal. We've got a young director now at the high school who's doing middle school and high school band. And it seems like, and it's been this way for a couple of years now, there's a little bit of a bump around sixth grade in terms of the band because I don't think there's a sixth grade band on the schedule. Now, I don't want to put Mr. Putnam on the spot here to discuss this. This is probably something maybe we can get with Daniel Reed and maybe talk about, but I think if we could, Gilmore County High School has got the perfect schedule for middle school and high school band. The way it's set up, it's an eight-period day, right? It's, it's, it's so easy to work those little classes in there. But I also understand, Shelley, correct me if I'm wrong here, in sixth grade, there is a general music class that is required that the sixth graders take. There's a general art class that required they have to take. And we do have a teacher taking care of that. Sixth grade BE, art, and music.
And health.
And health. And then, so really, they can't get to band, I don't think, at all that year. And I think it's more a personnel issue than a scheduling issue. That we may just, you know, you have a middle school, high school. There's only so far you can stretch those teachers and, and within an eight-period day. But I, maybe, if I could politely ask if maybe over the next academic year, we could maybe look at that again and maybe see if there is a way that we could possibly sneak in a middle school band somehow into the schedule? I know that our current high school director has a great relationship with Miss Leggett, and I think we could create a heck of a bridge from the elementary school to the high school. There's just a little piece there, I think it happens in sixth grade where they don't, they're not able. And not, you also have to remember, a lot of these parents, they do, not many people, you know, myself included, have a great deal of money to throw down on a five-thousand-dollar, three-thousand-dollar instrument. So they do the rent-to-own program through Bandland or through Music and Arts. And if they can't be in band in sixth grade, myself included, no parent's going to want to keep paying for those instruments. So they turn them in, and they can be in band in seventh grade, but they've already turned their instrument in and they're into kind of something else now. So is that something maybe we could just possibly revisit over the next year and just take a look at and see if it's doable? Okay, great, thank you, that's all I have.
I don't have anything at this time, Dr. Miller?
I just wanted to bring up like the way we have a liaison, like I'm the liaison with the extension office because, you know, we provide some of their funding. And, you know, the public library, we have picked up some funding. I think I saw in this month, it was like seven hundred and something maybe for utilities. And I, I would personally like to have a board liaison to the public library. I know that Sherry West is on the public library board, which has been a great thing. But, you know, I would just like to bring back updates about the public library and.
So on the next agenda, a board member would, I can't talk.
Liaison to the public library.
Okay, all right.
The public library was just, you know, a very big part of my growing up here and my education. And I would just like to.
Yeah, I agree.
Bring them into the fold.
There should be a bridge there, I agree with that.
Got the floor, Cody.
All right, any further? I don't have anything at this time. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. We are adjourned.
Thank you both.
Yes, thank you.
Lisa, I'm gonna, so this little personnel thing here for you.